of Allegiance led by Dinah Smith from Adams Upper Elementary.
Hello, everyone. Good evening and welcome Dinah and her family that are here today. Thank you for saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hang on a second here. Almost read the wrong bio there. So, this is Dinah. She's an 11-year-old student and is a sixth grader at Adams Upper Elementary. What's your teacher's name again?
Ms. Reames.
Ms. Reames. You love to read and play games. What are some of your favorite games?
Roblox.
Roblox? What about books? You like reading books? It's March is Reading Month. What's your favorite book?
I don't really have them right now.
That's okay, as long as you're reading. She's best at math, reading, paying attention, which is fantastic, and being a good friend. Hey, it says it right here. Your favorite book is The Harlem Charade by Natasha Tarpley. There are so many things she wants to learn and so many classes and lessons she wants to take: dance, singing, piano, violin, drawing, and writing. Wow, you've got a big agenda. Are you ready for it all?
Yeah.
All right, great. She wishes she was even better than, then, wait, "I wish I was even better than my best at math." Some things she's proud of, she is different, she can draw well, and she makes people laugh. All right, what's your favorite joke?
It was a knock-knock joke.
Okay, knock-knock.
Who's there?
I don't know. Who's there?
Wait, knock-knock.
Who's there?
Interrupting cow.
What is it?
Interrupting cow.
Interrupting cow. Oh, goodness. You got me good there. Your parents, your friends, your counselors, and J-Hope are the strong influences in your life because they've helped you get through things that maybe you didn't understand. She wants to be a leader and the person everyone trusts, and she's happy when people look up to her because she really enjoys that they enjoy that she exists. You're nervous. What are you nervous about? It says, "I am nervous but happy to represent my school." You seem to be just fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I appreciate you coming out tonight and singing, saying the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm happy that you're representing Adams Upper Elementary. I am an alum of Adams, so go Eagles. And did your parents want to come up and say a few words at all? No? You want to come up and take a group photo? All right, come on up. How about one more round of applause for Dinah Smith?
Councilman Godbout, present. Councilwoman Green, present. Councilman Hersberg, here. Councilman Londo, here.
Councilman McDermott, here. Councilwoman Rakowski, present. President Hart, here. My quorum is present.
Now, going to special presentations and announcements, we'll start with Mary McLendon, Wayne County Commissioner's Office.
Hello, and good evening to everyone, to the President of the Council, to all the councilmembers, to the mayor, to all the dignitaries here, and the fine citizens of Westland. I bid you greetings from the office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. And I won't be before you long. I just want to urge everyone to stay safe at this time and take care of yourselves. I think you all know by now that the Wayne County offices are closed, and they'll be closed for two weeks. And it's all due to the national emergency surrounding the coronavirus that's going on right now. And the offices are closed. That includes the Clerk's Office, that includes the Treasurer's Office as well. The Health Department is available for questions and information that you do have questions for or have a need for, and you can dial 211 for questions, or you can dial 734-287-7870. And that's for information regarding the virus. And the Wayne County events will be canceled for 30 days. Any events that you may know about will be canceled for 30 days. And again, I just want to urge everyone to be safe. I see that you do have the guide for the virus out there in the hallway, which is really good for your residents, so they can take a look at it and see what it's all about and how to prevent the spread of the virus. So again, I just want to urge everybody to stay safe at this time. The next coffee hour is scheduled for April, but hopefully it will convene in April, but that is the date that it's scheduled for. So again, stay safe as I leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we have Fire Chief Michael Strattner.
I just wanted to give you an update on where we're at with the coronavirus and just basically some kind of background information. I know there's a lot of information out there, and it just keeps coming in and coming in and coming in, and it's difficult to stay on top of it, and it's certainly more difficult to sort through what's a reliable source and what's not a reliable source. We'll cover some of that. You know, basically, we know what the coronavirus is now, how it's spread. You know, the symptoms are fever, cough, typically a dry cough, and difficulty breathing. Those are the symptoms that we're looking for. They're common, they're similar to the flu, but a little bit different. We know that this is spread very easily within the community. We're seeing it more and more. There's 54 reported cases in Michigan now. There's probably hundreds, if not thousands, that haven't been identified yet because they're only able to test about 121 tests a day. It's about a 24 to 72-hour turnaround time on those tests, so we'll eventually catch up, and this will keep spreading. Typically, it's spread through droplets, through respiratory, sneezing, coughing. That's why we talk about social distancing and staying more than six feet away from somebody. And basically, somebody who has it is told to stay home and isolate or self-quarantine. There's a little bit of difference in those two. But typically, if you are showing signs and symptoms, not everybody needs to go to the hospital, but you do need to isolate yourself and stay away from other people. And typically, you can get in contact with your medical, your health care professional, and they'll give you a little more guidance onto that. And then eventually, if you get to the point where you do need 911, we'll discuss that in a little while. But basically, the way to prevent it is very common to how we do deal with, you know, seasonal flu every year. Basically, the most important thing is if you're sick, stay home. Don't go to work. Obviously, we're not going to school anymore. Don't go out in the public. You just need to stay home. You know, you need to wash your hands thoroughly for at least 20 seconds. We know that. Avoid touching your eyes, face, and mouth, which is very difficult for a lot of people, including myself. You just have to wash your hands a lot more. Cover your cough or your sneeze into your arm. You don't want respiratory droplets going anywhere. Avoid contact with other people at all costs, especially if you are showing signs and symptoms. Just regularly clean and disinfect surfaces. Basically, what you've heard this term may be flatten the curve. Basically, what we're trying to do and what the CDC and all these recommendations that are coming out is, we're not, they're not necessarily going to stop the number of people from getting this, but basically what they're trying to do is to try to spread it out. They're trying to what's called flattening the curve, so they're not overwhelming our health care systems up front. They're basically able to spread this out over a time period, so they make sure they have enough beds, they make sure they have enough staff, they make sure they have enough equipment available to treat people properly. We've seen in other countries where it was front-loaded. We've learned a lesson, and these health care systems were just overwhelmed. So that's really what we're trying to do, and they are. There are significant changes when we see schools closing and we see we can't go to our restaurants, and we can't go to our bars tomorrow on St. Patty's Day. You see all these changes, but they're necessary. They're short-term changes. They're significant changes, but they're temporary changes, and we'll get through them, but it's all so we don't overwhelm that health care setting. People often ask, "How do I get tested?" You see a lot of these pop-up drive-through health care facilities, like the Beaumont system is offering drive-through testing. There's only so many kits available, and they're only going to treat people who are symptomatic, who are showing whether they have a cough, they have the fever, they're having difficulty breathing. They're going to test those folks first. Most other people are just going to be turned away. If you do have questions, you can contact your health care provider. They're going to provide you the most guidance. They're going to tell you whether or not you should go in and get tested. What we don't want people doing is just showing up to their doctor's office, showing up at the hospitals without at least calling first. Even our EMS care providers have certain protocols in place to where they're trying to spread out where they go, what routes they come in, so they can isolate them from other patients. And if you have any other questions, you can contact your Health Department. I do have some contact information, and I have quite a bit of it, but I think it's all very important to get to. There's several options to stay informed about coronavirus. One of them would be the city's website, that cityofwestland.com. We are keeping up to date. The IT Department, Craig Brown, has been doing a great job with that. Michigan Coronavirus has a website at michigan.gov/coronavirus. The CDC is cdc.gov/coronavirus. You have some hotline numbers that you can call that are important. Michigan has a coronavirus hotline at 888-535-6136. Wayne County has a hotline, 734-287-7870. Westland has a hotline, 734-793-9261. All of these will get you in touch with people who can answer questions about the coronavirus. If you want very health-specific questions, the Beaumont Health System has a hotline at 248-551-7000. And Henry Ford Health System has one at 313-874-7500. And that's 24/7 as the Henry Ford Health System. And like I said, a lot of these are doctors that you'll be talking to who can answer specific questions and get you guided to their facility or to another facility closer to you. Need to talk about the 911 system real quick. When this first came out, 911 was trained with pre-screening, where'd you travel to, who are you in contact to. A lot of those traveling questions have kind of gone to the wayside because now we know it's everywhere. Doesn't matter whether you traveled domestically, internationally, or haven't traveled at all, people are getting it. But what's very important to the 911 system is that you are upfront with your signs and symptoms, that you do have a fever, that you do have a cough, that you are having trouble breathing, because what that does, it allows our EMS responders to put on the proper personal protective equipment to respond to your home. It's, we've seen it across the country, is when our guys aren't notified, our firefighters and EMS responders, now they're quarantined at their homes. You know, we're trying to keep everybody safe. It's very important that you do that. And there's just a couple of quick questions that a lot of people ask, is like a lot of seasonal flus and colds, is this going to go away when the warm weather gets here? They don't know. That's why it's called the novel coronavirus, which means it's new. They're still studying it every single day. They don't know if warm weather is going to get rid of this. We can only hope it does. Should I be tested for COVID-19? Again, there's only so many kits available. The best, most recommended thing to do is call your health care provider. Most people will get through this without a lot of signs and symptoms, and they'll get through it more, most likely do the flu. It's our elderly population or people with underlying medical conditions that we have to be most concerned about. Again, call your health care provider, and obviously, if you are having some serious symptoms, call 911. Let them know what you're having so our EMS providers can get to care. And that's about it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Now, moving to citizens' input or questions on the agenda. Citizens are invited to come up and speak on any item that's specifically on the agenda. You have three minutes. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Close citizens' comments on the agenda, move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Godbout, support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there a discussion? Is there a discussion? Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. Relative to the consent calendar, that's a discussion?
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion that Item I be moved to new business as Item 1A, and Item J be moved to new business as Item 1B.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, items are moved to new business. Back to the consent calendars. Any other discussion?
Yes, the second item I wanted to discuss was B, the approval of the minutes for the study session. There is a, in the packet that was sent out to City Council on Thursday of last week, there was a document that was not included, and apparently, it was added at some point between Friday and today. The notation that you made following the attendance that was taken for the study session states that Councilwoman Tasha Green has asked to go on the record, that she refuses to abide in the policies and procedures in the event that council rebuttal time gets limited. That is not correct. What I stated was relative to one sentence in one line item. So to make a statement that would appear to be that I stated that I am completely in objection and will not abide by any policy or procedure, the policy and procedures is multiple pages, multiple sections, so I would like, and further, I don't see there being any notation of discussion that is taking place at the study sessions other than a date and a time that was the same consistency with Councilman Godbout. There were no notes. So if you're going to take notes, the first request that I would ask is that I'm quoted accurately, because this is actually not correct. Secondly, I would like all of the discussion to be noted, as opposed to select, because there are certain discussions that we discuss during the study sessions. When we're ironing out these contract agreements and what may appear to be possibly what has been alleged to be potentially corruption and other things that we discuss in the study sessions, those type of comments are not noted. So if you are going to take a different approach than Councilman Godbout, I respect that because you're a different council president, but note everything, or don't quote me incorrectly. So I would like that comment removed, because actually, what I stated, to speak factually, was only in objection to Article 5, Section 14B, and it was the very last sentence, is what I stated I was in objection with. And I stated during the meeting that I would not comply with the last sentence of section, or excuse me, Article 5, Section 14B for the following reasons. The first reason that I stated regarding that sentence was this addition, or that sentence, does not align with Michigan State law, and there is no statute that corroborates that sentence to be anything other than a personal preference based on debatable opinion. So that is a recommendation that council would like added, but I'm not in agreement with that because there is no law that supports that. And the other reason why I said I was not in support of that sentence and would not comply is because at the request and preference of Councilman Londo, last year, when you, Councilman Hart, and two other councilmen sat down and revised the Policy and Procedures Manual, you, there was an adage that our council comments were going to be cut down to three minutes. And Councilman Londo made a request that he wanted to be able to speak longer than three minutes, and that request was honored. So I did not feel that allowing that request to go forward and then implementing a similar request of a limitation of three minutes at any point is acceptable, because you set a precedent when you honored his request. And so for that, those two reasons, I am not going to abide by that, but I wanted that to either be added to your notation, your notation to be changed to specifically state what I said I was in objection with, because I did not say I would not abide by the policies and procedures. I said I won't abide by that. I'd like that updated, or the entire sentence or sheet that was added to the second or third draft of the packet, removed.
So for clarification, is the motion to strike the sentence?
There was no motion.
Yeah. Is there a motion to strike the sentence?
Yes, I would like the sentence stricken. From the, that's not the entire motion. I would like that sentence stricken from the record, or that it be, I'm sorry.
Move it off consent calendar.
Move it off the consent calendar.
Move it off the consent calendar, okay. Well, I make a motion to move Item B off the consent calendar to, what would that be? Item 1C?
Is there any, is there support? Is there any support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yeah.
Motion passes. Item B will be 1A. I'm sorry.
1C.
1C. All right, back to the original motion of the consent calendars. Any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, calendar passes as amended.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of regular meeting held March 2, 2020. Approval of minutes of closed study session held March 2, 2020. Approval of request from North Brothers Ford, 33300 Ford Road, to close Marquette and Carlson south of Ford Road on May 16, 2020, from 7:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. for their annual 5K run walk. Approval of request from Shannon Gallock on behalf of St. Mary's Cause of Our Joy Catholic Church, 8200 North Wayne Road, for a one-day special liquor license to serve beer at their June jamboree event to be held at the church on June 19, 2020. Approval of request from Greg Sloop on behalf of VFW Harris Care, Post 33231055 South Wayne Road, for a one-day special liquor license to serve alcohol at their tribute show and dinner event on April 4, 2020, 5 p.m. to midnight, and their bingo event on May 8, 2020, from 5 p.m. to midnight, also to be held at their post. Approval of intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County Land Bank of the City of Westland pertaining to the land bank quiet title and news and subatement programs. Professional services agreement extension with Community Media LLC. The extension shall be for a five-year term and reflects a CPI plus 2% increase to be effective July 1, 2020. Adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the City of Westland Department of Parks and Recreation to apply for the Michigan Department Natural Resources Trust Grant, application number one, to add ADA amenities and recreation structures to Tatten Park located at 1901 North Carlson. The MDNR Trust Fund Grant application in the amount of $300,000 with the city share not to exceed $100,000 of the total project cost of $400,000 during the 2021-2022 fiscal year. Adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the City of Westland Department of Parks and Recreation to apply for the MDNR Trust Grant, application number two, to add ADA amenities and recreation structures to Tatten Park. The application in the amount of $150,000, city share not to exceed $50,000, of a total project cost $200,000 during the 2021-2022 fiscal year. Introduction of Ordinance 16788, an ordinance to amend Chapter 18 of the Westland City Code, Section 18-17, to provide for fees for the release of animals from impoundment. Introduction of Ordinance 29W243, an ordinance to amend Chapter 46 of the Westland City Code, Sections 461 through 462, to provide for fees for the boarding, pickup, and handling of animals. Approval of request to increase the required SESC bond amount currently retained by the Building Department to ensure completion of required grading and landscaping work prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy from $500 to $2,000. The last item approved on the consent calendar, approval of request for elected officials and appointed planning commissioners to seek further education and certification through the Michigan State University Extension Citizen Planner Course. Moving to new business. Item 1A, which I'll find in just a moment. Approval of bid for full operation of the Assessing Department. The administration recommended the loan bidder, WCA Assessing, amount $2,436,791 over a five-year period.
Motion by Councilman Godbout, support by Councilman Londo. Councilwoman Rakowski? Your light was on, okay. Is there any other? Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I have several questions regarding Item I, approval of bid for the full operation of the Assessing Department to WCA. For those of you who are not aware, WCA is the contractor company that does the assessing for the City of Westland. This country, or excuse me, company has been a long-term assessor or contract holder for the City of Westland, and the city is again requesting, or sent out a bid and is essentially requesting another five-year contract for this particular contractor. The contract, the issues or questions that I have is relative to the action that the city took regarding this bid, or the failure to act. This particular bid, which is millions and millions of dollars in magnitude, and it goes throughout our entire city, as you can see, we're $2.4 million being requested for this new contract, and the city, this is the same contract that City Council, this is the contractor that the mayor asked City Council last year to terminate the contract of WCA. At that time, there was a year and a half left on that contract. The mayor wanted us to terminate the year and a half and start a brand-new long-term contract for WCA, giving them a 33% increase on their contract, and also a guaranteed 4% increase a year. It is important to know, just for the sake of transparency, that the owner of
It is important to know, just for the sake of transparency, that the owner of this particular contract is a former city council person here in the City of Westland. He is also a contract, or excuse me, campaign donor to several of the elected officials here in the city, including the mayor and some of the city council officials. So I would ask, in the sake of ethics and integrity, that any city council member who has taken money from the owner or any employees of this company, that you recuse yourself or abstain from this bid for the sake, for the reason of a conflict of interest. Because if they have a city contract, and they are donating monies regularly, on a regular basis, to the reelection of people who sit here and vote, yes, that is a conflict of interest, and it may be an additional issue beyond that. But I would ask that any member who has taken money, or not taken, received donations for campaigns or otherwise, that you recuse yourself and abstain from this bid. I am not in agreement with this, this bid, because for one, any contract of this magnitude to place this out for a bid for two weeks is absolutely unheard of in the business world. The city placed this contract for two weeks, which basically reduced the amount of time for other potential companies who may have even wanted to do, or participate to, you know, you have two weeks to do it. It is very customary in the bidding arena, business arena, when you send a bid out, normally, a bid, especially a long-term construction or contract bid, is sent out for no less than thirty days. No less than thirty days. So the fact that the city sent this out for fourteen days, and that fourteen days includes weekends, that's not business days. That's Saturday and Sunday as well. So that even shrinks the amount of time for people to have been able to apply, or to participate as well. So I'm actually very troubled, just by the fact that this bid has been brought back to city council, and the bid that the city is now asking us to, the mayor and his administration is asking city council to sit here and approve tonight, gives this contractor a twenty-four percent increase on this contract. The packet that we received, the cover sheet states, and I'm going to, I will offer a quote that was given to us by the Finance Department, so, and it's signed by Steve Smith, Daniel Block, and Mayor Wild, this states that the cost of, excuse me, the cost for full operation of the Assessing Department contract for two thousand nineteen, twenty budget year is three hundred sixty-two thousand, four hundred seventy-two dollars. Per the bid received, the cost for the full operation of the Assessing Department contract for two thousand twenty-one, which would start in July, in the new budget, is, has been increased to four hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars. That is a increase of eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars over what they're already charging us on the long-term bid that they're already in, plus this is giving them a guaranteed four percent increase on top of the twenty-four percent increase rate. Why on earth would the city and taxpayers agree to allow the city, and that's us, officials, to place a bid out for only two weeks to a long-term contractor, and offer this type of money when our police and fire barely get one percent? And it is, and there is no employee in the City of Westland that gets four percent guaranteed a year. But we're proposing this for contractors, long-term contractors, who donate to the campaigns of the people who are doing the voting and doing the recommendations. It screams of, I would like to see the city send this out for, we are not, and there's no reason to accept this bid tonight. We absolutely do not have to accept this bid tonight. And I would like to see the city place this out for a minimum of a thirty-day period. And I would also like a notate, or to, city council to be updated by the Purchasing Department, Devon Adams, or whomever would place it out to bid, when it goes out. So, you know, that we know. But to place a multimillion-dollar contract out for two weeks, and then say, here you go, he's the only one who did it, of course he is. It's mind-boggling, the way that business transactions are handled here in the City of Westland. If this were corporate America, oh my God. This, taxpayers' money is not free money. We are, a city council is supposed to make the smartest decision with this money. This is alarming to me, and I'm not in agreement with it. So I make a motion that city council does not accept this bid, and that the city be requested to send this out-
Sorry.
-for bid for a period of no less than thirty days, in addition to, if anyone has taken money from this owner or employees of this company, that they recuse themselves from this vote. Thank you.
Councilman Godbout.
First, I'd like to defer to the city attorney in regards to campaign finance laws and counsel's duties and responsibilities to vote. Then I'll continue my comments.
Through the chair, the-
Hold on. All right, there you go.
Through the chair, the receipt of campaign contributions, which are fully disclosed through the Campaign Finance Act, does not require one to abstain from voting on a matter, on a so-called conflict of interest. If that was the case, then the easiest thing to do would be give money to everybody and conflict them out, so none of them could vote, right? So it doesn't really, it doesn't work that way. And all those contributions of owners or employees of this particular vendor would be disclosed pursuant to the Campaign Finance Act. The company itself, WCA Assessing's not making contributions, again, corporate contributions, as you all know, is, are not allowed. It would be the owners or employees of said company that I think the focus was on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I can continue?
Yep.
Sure. This item was on the agenda a year ago, and two council members that are currently here, and two that are not currently here, voted to deny the contract a year ago, when the administration had negotiated with the vendor to provide the assessing services. So as a result, we were operating under the existing contract for the remainder of the term. This contract then went out for bid, followed the legal process. Counsel was notified when it did go out for bid, and we came back with the bid from WCA Assessing for the assessing services. During that time, one of my other council colleagues asked the Finance Department to put together what would happen if we brought the assessing services back in-house, and what the anticipated costs would be for that. The amount under this contract is still less than any of the other comparables that were provided from the Finance Department to operate an assessing department are. The denial of that contract back a year ago, of the negotiated contract, versus what this current bid is, is costing the city an additional three hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So we had a deal negotiated that would have saved the city three, over three hundred thousand dollars without going out for bid, and services contracts do not have to go out for bid. So as a result, that negotiation was denied, and so we put it out for bid. And as you can see, it now costs us three hundred thousand dollars more for putting it up, waiting the year for the contract to go through its course, and putting it back out for bid. So there's, and that's over the five-year period. The three hundred thousand is over the five-year period. So the city followed all of the requirements for putting it out for bid. It was noticed in the paper. It was noticed on Mitten, and was on the city website. So there was adequate opportunity for people to bid this contract. So as such, I will be supporting this contract.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, the petitioner, they're in the audience here tonight, Mr. Aaron Powers and Doug Shaw, they're both a part of WCSA. They have been the city's assessor for quite a long time. We've contracted their service out just before the recession, or maybe even during the recession, and they stepped in in a very troubling time for the city, where we had a Level Four Assessor that retired, and we had a small in-house staff. So they came in, and since that day, they've done just an incredible job. They've worked with the city. When they first came into the city, the level, the dollar sign that they came into the city was what the city had budgeted for the Assessing Department the year before. And they've been working since then off of, I can't remember exactly what the number was, it was a CPI plus a certain percentage share. In the meantime, the markets changed, WCSA has grown, now they deliver assessing services for just about every community in Wayne County, and a lot of communities in Michigan. They worked with the city. I would say that our assessing department in the City of Westland now is probably one of the tightest in the area. They came in, we have a great staff, they're here every day. They've worked with us through all the twenty-five thousand-plus residential re inspections that we did, and all that's in the system now. They worked with us through just an enormous amount of personal property tax appeals over the years. They've done it on a very professional level. We have a Level Four Assessor now that works every day at City Hall. And counsel, I know you know her, and the public's mattered before, Jen, she does a great job for us. There's been periods of time we've asked WCSA to also diversify their workforce, and their workforce that works here in City Hall. I think they've done a good job of creating a workforce in City Hall that looks like the residents that they serve. And so the one thing that should be said is that they do an incredible job. They really, really do a good job for the City of Westland. So there's been a lot of stuff said here, a lot of stuff was said a year ago and was brought up. And at the end of the day, you two gentlemen and your staff that work at City Hall, and the owner of your company, you don't deserve this. You guys do a great job, not only for us, but for just about every community around that you work for, because we talk with the other supervisors, we talk with the other mayors, and you guys really, you're the best in the business. And the one thing we found out when we bid out this work, and we knew this last year when we looked at this, you're the only guys that do this work around here, so you do a great job. As Councilman Godbout said, we did become before city council last year because these folks were entering into the last year of their contract. We negotiated a contract extension with them that, at the time, it was an increase of what we were paying, but it's a lot less than what we're going to ask you to approve here tonight. So there were a lot of the same comments that were made at that meeting, and counsel made a decision not to extend that contract. So we did go out to bid, we found out they're the only folks out there that do this work at this level, and their bid now is what they're getting from all the other cities. So their contract, while it's a five-year contract, it lines up with our five-year budget that we do, it's our five-year budget forecast. We like five-year contracts because it's five years' worth of numbers that we can plug into our five-year forecast, so we can start to have good, solid numbers moving forward. Just to put it into perspective, the contract, while it may be over two million dollars for five years, the annual price, which we would start off in year one, is four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Now what we did is we looked at all the other communities around us that require a Level Four Assessor, and that's because of the size of your tax rolls. When we looked at those costs, Rochester Hills, their annual budget's one point one million, West Bloomfield Township, one million, City of Warren, two point two million, City of Novi, eight hundred thousand, Glen Township, one point two million, City of Dearborn, one million, City of Troy, one million, Southfield, eight hundred and fifty thousand, Farmington Hills, seven hundred and seventy-seven, and the list goes on and on. Kent Township, five hundred and forty thousand. Westland, year one, under this contract, we're asking them to approve tonight, is four hundred and forty-nine thousand. So these guys, they're the best in the business, we only want the best in the business. There's a cost for that, this is a cost that we think is fair. And counsel, we would ask you tonight to move forward with this for a couple of reasons. Number one is, my proposed budget's due to you folks in a couple of weeks. I'd like to be able to plug this number in, and also, these guys would like to know if they're going to be retaining these employees or not, so that there's no drop-off in service. Councilman McDermott did ask if we could put him some numbers together to see what it would cost if we were to try to do this in-house. What we found is that, first of all, there's no Level Four Assessors that are really available right now. So what we did is we took a look at the Novi budget, and broke it down with all their different employees that make up that department. Through the Conference of Western Wayne, every year they issue a report of what every, all the different communities are paying different job titles. What we did is we took the average of all those different communities and put it together. If we were to recreate the same department that Novi has, we estimated our cost was still about five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, and that was even if we could go out and find these folks, find folks that are out there looking for jobs as Level Four Assessors, Appraiser One, Appraiser Two. Right now, we're having a hard time hiring for all of our positions. So I really think that the city's done our diligence on this. I think if we would have done this deal last year, we could have saved the taxpayers some money. So I think we're going to chalk that up as a lesson learned. And then at the end of the day, myself, and I think all the other people on city council, all totally understand Wayne County campaign finance laws, and to say that anything that we did violated those campaign finance laws is not true. That is not true whatsoever. So you have my word on it, you can call the Wayne County Elections Department tomorrow and ask them if there's anything that myself or any of these other council people have done in violation of campaign finance laws. Thank you.
Second speech, Councilwoman Tasha Gray. Your light was on, right?
When you say second speech, can you speak to that, please?
Yeah. Robert rules of order dictate that you have two speaking sessions up to ten minutes for every single item for debate.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to clarify a couple things that both the mayor and Councilman Godbout stated. At no time did I say that campaign finance laws were violated. So what I'd like people to do who are listening and who will be watching this on TV, don't allow yourself to get distracted. At no time did I say that. What I stated was, from a standpoint of ethics and integrity, if you have taken money from this contractor who's been in the city for years, who the mayor is now proposing that we not only give him a twenty-four percent increase, we also give him a locked four percent guaranteed increase, while we penny pinch our police and fire, from a standpoint of integrity, I think is unacceptable. And I'll speak to that even further. The mayor made a comment about other cities, researching other cities. When Steve sent this email, Councilman McDermott did ask for feedback. Steve did not respond to, and, excuse me, Steve Smith, the budget director, did not offer a response to Councilman Godbout, or, excuse me, Councilman McDermott, until Saturday afternoon at three twenty-seven. We have city council today in the midst of this coronavirus, and we're trying to accommodate multiple residents. We have basically a day and a half over the weekend. We didn't even have a business day. Weekend, we didn't even have a business day. We have not investigated this, and the sum of what we received were two Word documents, Microsoft Word documents with two small charts. The information that was provided to us was not researched, and it was provided in the middle of the weekend. So, to, I just want to make sure, there was no time for any of what the two small charts that were, looked like they were cut and pasted. We couldn't research that. Also, in terms of what the mayor stated about taking donations, I'm not sure if many of you were watching the news last year. The city of Taylor was raided by the FBI for the contracts that they were involved in. One of the contractors that was raided three or four days after Taylor got raided, because he has contracts, and Taylor as well, also has contracts here in the city of Westland as well, and when there's discussion about the campaign finance and what's ethical and what's not, the truth, or the fact that I actually was not aware of, was made public that that contractor not only donated to Mayor Wild's campaign, he donated to Councilman Mike Londo's campaign. So, if there were no red flags in terms of a conflict of interest, I would doubt that the FBI or the Detroit News would be putting, printing that type of information. So, and they're also talking, they're watching the contributions from other cities and other elected officials. So, anybody who is compelled to think that although the law doesn't say, well, you can take money from contractors and then, oh, yeah, get together and give them all, give them all these multimillion-dollar contracts, no, it doesn't state it verbatim, but from an ethical standpoint, it is, it rises to question. I also wanted to clarify the mayor's statement in terms of it's not fair and they don't deserve that. Again, people, please don't get distracted. Nobody said, this, emotions does not belong in our City Council meetings. We are discussing, this is the interest of counts, or taxpayers' dollars and the business of the city. To speak truth about what is transpiring with these contracts is not unfair. It's actually being transparent. So, you know, to say something in a way to pull on someone's heartstrings or to compel them into guilt, it's, it does not need to, this, that should not be happening in our meetings because it's actually not, it's not relevant, and it's not, that's not what is occurring. I also wanted to clarify that the mayor and both Councilmen Godbout mentioned that it costed us more money because we didn't approve this contract, the 33% increase contract last year. Actually, this year, they're offering, they're asking for 24% and a locked 4%. We're going to give this contractor, who, and I've already stated the facts, a half a million dollars every year, and a guaranteed increase, more than we're giving every city employee, and the police and fire, anybody who would find that acceptable with a bid that went out for two weeks, including the weekend days, not even, not 10, 14 business days, it's less than 14 business days. I think it's highly, it's very, very questionable. And, in my opinion, this is no different from me having someone who comes in here that I am directly related to or that I benefit from, and I push a contract that would give them more money that is actually typical. And again, we had no, we have not researched any of that. So, to give us an email in the middle of the weekend and say, well, oh, yeah, Councilman McDermott, he did ask, and he got, we got a two-page Word copy and paste with a small chart. It's not research. We don't even know if it's true. So, to say that, well, now we got to get these budgets done, the mayor knew we had to get those budgets done last year. And you know, when we denied the 33% increase last year, the mayor refused to send that contract out to bid last year because we asked him at that council meeting, I specifically asked him, would you send this contract out to bid so that we can compare this and make sure we're exercising the best use of taxpayers' dollars? He refused to even send it to bid. So, now you wait right until the cusp of budget season and say, oh, we got, we only got about five minutes, and here's another emergency. Emergency after emergency after emergency with these contracts that are delayed, and then council is urged to approve this. We should not approve this. And, again, I, for the reasons that I've stated and many more, this is not, this costed taxpayers no money for delaying it. What it did was, the mayor sent it out for two weeks, and now they want to slide this through. So, again, as I stated before, no, campaign finance law does not say that you can't take money from contractors and award multimillion-dollar, long-term contracts to them and then continue to receive campaign funds from them year over year. No, that's not, that's not a fact. What is a fact that, is that it is, from an ethical standpoint, it could be considered a conflict of interest, because you directly benefit from the money that this company makes, and they are contributing a portion of their money to your reelection. So, there is a question of a conflict of interest. And anyone who believes that elected officials are not being watched and who's donating to our account, or saying that we're not all under, Big Brother is not watching, you're crazy. All you have to do is Google or turn on the news. There's a news story every day with an elected official, whether it's marijuana, indictments, everything. We, the standard that we are held to is higher than a normal citizen because the level of leadership that we have committed to. So, I just wanted to clarify some of the misstatements, and I ask the public not to be distracted by some of the things that were stated here that actually either were not true or does not apply, and please watch the way that we vote. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Council President, I move that we call the question.
There's a motion to call the question? Support by Councilman Londo. Call the question requires two-thirds majority.
You can't call the question until we, I made a motion to that we require the city to send this out to bid. That has to be voted on first.
Motion on the floor. Call the question, roll call.
To call the question, Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
It's been called. When you're ready, I'll call, roll for item 1A.
Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
No.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 1B. Approval of bid for commercial and industrial property re-evaluation services. Administration recommends the loan bidder, WCA Assessing, amount $298,640 over a four-year period.
Motion by Councilman Godbout.
Support.
Support by Councilman Londo. Is there a discussion? Is there a discussion? Is there dissent?
There's discussion.
Did you, sign on? Yes, I'm on mine. Councilwoman Green.
Yes, for the reasons that I've stated during prior discussions, I am in objection to approval of this bid, and I would ask that the city would include, since you, it appears that you're going to approve this contract anyway, I would ask, I make a motion that the city include a clause in the contract that, which actually, it does not exist, to my knowledge, that the city of Westland has the right to terminate the contract in the future for any reason with a 30-days written notice, so that we are not locked into a $2.5 million contract in the event that the finances change in the city of Westland. Thank you.
There's a motion to, there's a motion to insert right to terminate. Any support? Any support? Motion dies for lack of support. Back to the initial motion. Is there any other discussion?
Councilman Londo.
Thank you. I had a discussion on the last item, but I'll kind of combine the last, the last item and this item together. With this item, there is no increase, and I have both packets from February 2 of 2019, if the public wants to view, if any of my colleagues want to view. I definitely did my research and looked this up. The price stays the same each year, $74,660 per year for a five-year total of $298,640. And as Councilman Godbout mentioned, there was a $312,238 increase between the last contract and this contract, had we passed it last time. So, as far as doing research, I looked at all those, the stuff that Steve Smith sent us from the Finance Department, I looked at budgets from multiple cities. I know a few of my colleagues did as well, because we were kind of joking around at their budget, what theirs looks like compared to ours. So, I did my research, folks, just want you to know that. So, thanks.
Councilman Godbout. No. No. Councilman Green. Oh, sorry, go Hersberg team, then he's got to go first. I apologize.
Thank you. So, this is just a bid for the commercial and industrial property re-inspections. This is something the state requires us to do every 10 years. Through the Chair of the Administration, I'd just like to know what year we did this last time, what year in the 10-year period we're currently on.
This has not been done in the last 10 years.
Any other discussion? Peter, all set. Councilman Green.
Thank you. Through the Chair to Steve Smith, can you send me a copy of the documentation that details when the last time the commercial inspections were done? Can you send that to the entire council?
Through the Chair, I will do the research on it, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to add that there's been items that I've requested during the City Council meetings that I have not received, but there's been promises given. So, if it would be best if I just do a Freedom of Information Act request, I'm prepared to do that, but I think it is very relevant that we have that information before the budget is done. By comment relative to Councilman Londo, I would refer him to page 71 of the 140-page bid packet we received. The third paragraph that is signed by the mayor, Steve Smith, and Dan Block states that the cost of the full operating of the assessment contract, it, for 2019, 2020, is The contract for 2020 is $449,865. That's a 24% increase, which was, the, I don't know if you're looking at what was put before us last year that we denied, or I have no idea, but this contract is asking for a bump on the rates of 24% plus a four-year locked increase. And if you, and I would also refer you to page 72, if you do the math, you can clearly calculate that this is a, is 4% higher from year one to year five. He starts out year one at $449,865, and he ends at $526,278 for a total of 2,400, excuse me, $2,436,791. So, there is, in fact, an increase, and I actually do my research as well. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Second comment.
Thanks, President Hart. Yes, just for the record, I was looking at the February 2019 packet, the February 2 2019 packet, it's page 52, where it stated the totals, and I added those up, and it's where I got my numbers from. Thanks.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 1C. Approval of the minutes of the study session held March 2, 2020.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Support by Councilman Godbout. Councilwoman Green.
Yes, so not to belabor the point, I simply ask that this comment be stricken or that you update it to where it is, in fact, factual, because at this point, it is not. I ask that you include the article and the clause that, the sentence that I stated that I'm not in agreement with, because I never said that I'm not in agreement with the policies and procedures, or that I would not abide by policies and procedures. So, I make a motion that this comment is either stricken or it's updated to be factual, a factual quote relative to exactly the sentence and clause and article that I said I was not in agreement with. Thank you.
Just clarification, you'll have to give me one motion or the other. I can't have two options on a motion. So, either you move to strike the comment, or you move to add a comment.
Well, the comment at this point is false. So, I'm not, it actually is a misquote, and I don't even think that that is, I don't even know if something like that is legal in a, in a meeting session. So, I ask that the quote be stricken, and if it's not stricken, I will ask that it be revised. So, I guess at this point, I'm asking that it be stricken.
There's a motion to strike the notes. Is there support? Is there support? Motion. Support from Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Roll call.
On the amendment to strike the comment on the back of the minutes, Councilman Godbout.
No.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
No.
Councilman McDermott.
No.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
No.
President Hart.
No.
Motion fails.
Back to the original motion. Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
I have my light on.
No, I do, it's not on here, I apologize. Give me one second. Councilman Green.
Yes, I make a motion that this false and incorrect statement be updated to state the article and section, which is one sentence that I said I would not abide by, of the policy and procedures. You, in fact, have stated that I will not abide by the policies and procedures, which is a multi-page document, and I never stated that, and I can prove that I never stated it. So, I would like this, this statement to be revised to, once again, include the article and section, which is one sentence that I said that I would not abide by. Thank you.
Is there support? Seeing no support, motion dies. Back to the original motion. Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
To approve consent, item B, now being voted as 1C. Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. We're going to move to new business, item 1. Set public hearing date for proposed 2020-2021 budget. It's been suggested that the public hearing date be May 4, 2020.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Support by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously.
New business, item 2. Set public hearing date for Community Development Block Grant and Home Program Annual Action Plan for the fiscal period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. It's been suggested the public hearing date be held April 20, 2020.
Motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item 3. Denial of proposed land division, 8332 Hugh Avenue, north of Van Arbor Trail, west of Middlebelt, on the east side of Hugh, planning department number 2231.
Motion by Councilman Londo.
Support.
Support by Councilman Godbout. Is petitioner present? Yes.
I'm a mining was very heavy.
One second, one second, sir. Mo?
Sorry, yep. Good evening, Council. The subject site here is located in a single-family residential neighborhood up on your screen. This is south of Joy Road, just west of Middlebelt. The site and all properties surrounding it are zoned R5, single-family residential, and a deteriorated home previously existed on the site here, was tarp up on top, was recently demolished. recently demolished. The petitioner tonight is proposing to split this parcel into two exactly same-sized parcels. This is the approximate split line right here. The proposed parcels, resulting parcels, do not comply with the minimum lot width and lot size requirements in the R5 zoning district. In the R5 zoning district, parcels are required to be sixty feet wide along the street side here, and seventy-two hundred square feet in area. The two parcels are exact same sizes, fifty-four hundred square feet, and only forty feet wide of frontage along Hugh Street here. There's a lot of, this is, I was going to say this later, but I'll just bring it up right now, popped in my mind, there's a lot of things that we need to work on updating in our zoning ordinance. It's, last comprehensive update was late nineties, I believe. We've had maybe one, one master plan update for sure, maybe two, so it's time to update our zoning ordinance. But the sixty-foot requirement actually in the, in the R5 district is, is a pretty good standard. You can get away with fifty-five foot, sixty's a good mark. With the forty-five-foot lots here that exist, predate the city's incorporation, and what the original flat of the land, it causes parking issues, it causes stormwater runoff issues to adjacent properties, it causes these close, close curb cuts, reducing on-street parking and things like that. So for this petition to be successful, it also requires variances that are going to be in front of the zoning board if this gets approved tonight, next week, for variances that are listed in your packet. I can answer questions if, on those if you need. The Administration and Planning Commission are both recommending denial of this. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this, March third. No one was present at the meeting, residents were noticed. However, one resident did write via the clerk's office a letter to the zoning board expressing concerns. I believe that person is one of these two residents here on Fremont Street. Real quickly, the Planning Commission came to a conclusion to recommend denial, because it's uncomfortable sending these significant deviations to the zoning board of appeals. An argument was made by the Commissioner that there are several forty-foot wide parcels in this area. The Planning Commission acknowledged that fact, but also stated that it predates the city, and also the zoning laws that are currently in place today to reduce that type of density. And finally, while the Planning Commission is willing to approve deviations for, for lot width that are minimal, again, it does not want to approve and set a standard to approve forty-foot wide parcels in the future. That's the recommendation from the Administration and the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Is petitioner present? Anything you'd like to add?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Larry Henny. I am a Realtor, and I'm representing Suave Holmes, Michael Suave. He has, I'm prepared, but he has asked me to try to get a postponement to date, only because he, he wanted his engineer to be here as well. His engineer is sick, and we all know that we don't want anybody here that's sick. So, so at, at any rate, I'm asking for a postponement. If that can't be possible, I'm prepared.
Through the Attorney's Office, if the petitioner wants to withdraw, do we just take a motion and pull it off the agenda?
So through the Chair, I think, are you asking to withdraw it from tonight's agenda?
Just, just from tonight's agenda, but, but do not want to withdraw our petition.
So the question I'm asking is, are you postponing it till the next meeting, or are you, are you withdrawing at this time, and then you'll reschedule it through the Director of Planning?
I'm withdrawing it to the next meeting, if that's possible.
That would be a post, that would be a postponement. So if you move the withdrawal, it comes right off my agenda. If you want to postpone, then the council needs to go ahead and resolve to postpone that to the next agenda. So what is, what is your desire?
Okay.
Is that your desire to postpone?
Yes.
Okay, well, hold that thought real quick. Councilwoman Green had a question.
I make a motion to postpone item three under new business to allow the attendee to return with his engineer who can add additional information as to this request.
To the next meeting?
Until the next scheduled City Council meeting.
Support.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion to postpone to the next scheduled council meeting, they're supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, it's postponed to the next scheduled meeting.
Thank you.
New business, item four, approval of proposed land division, three-five-seven-zero-one Central City Parkway, north of Warren, between Nankin and Central City Parkway, planning department number two-two-three-two. Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed land division, and further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries.
New business, item five, adoption of amended policies and procedures for the Westland City Council.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Support by Councilman Godbell. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item six, approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries. At this time, I'm, yeah, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and pass the gavel. I'm going to make a motion for new business item, Westland City Council cancels the April sixth, next scheduled council meeting in wake of the coronavirus, in order to practice social distancing, and to be prepared for the community for anything that could happen.
Support.
That's you, Mr. Londo.
Oh, I apologize. There's a motion on the floor by Council President Hart, supported by-
Councilwoman Green. Is there any discussion? Council, Councilman Godbell. Oh, wrong mic, sorry.
Yes, there's, there's a couple different points on this, but one of which is our city charter dictates that we have two council meetings per month that are scheduled prior to the start of the year. There is also action being taken at this point in time. At this point, most of the confinement or reduced activity levels is through the end of the month. The next meeting is not until April seventh, which is a, which is after at least the current projected quarantine or restricted meeting is, is to be lifted. So I think canceling a, a meeting, A, we're in potential violation of the charter, B, it, it's also premature based off of the current status of the, the coronavirus situation that's been explained even as late as this afternoon. There is also, the MML just sent out a notification, they're working with the administrations to determine whether the governor can enact virtual meetings to take place if the quarantine is extended so that councils can conduct the business of the city. So being that we have, A, we'll have the budget by that point in time, we should have the budget, because April first, the city gets the budget, and we need to start preparing our, our discussions for the next year's, next fiscal year's budget. But there's also other business of the city that needs to get transacted and completed. So I am speaking against supporting, canceling the meeting at this point in time, as I believe it's premature and not necessary at this point.
Thank you, Councilman Godbell, Councilwoman Green. Give me one second. Okay.
Yes, thank you. I actually would like to state for the record that canceling this meeting is actually not premature, and the governor, as of three hours ago, released any, a press release, the Michigan Municipal League released a press release on behalf of Governor Whitmer. And I will state that I spoke to the Michigan Municipal League this afternoon relative to the coronavirus concern and our meetings, and was told that this decision was forthcoming. And I have shared that with a couple council people, but, so not to read this entire thing, or this entire release, it says, "We call on state officials to move quickly to allow city and village councils and other local governments to hold meetings via virtual modes of communication, such as teleconference and Skype when possible during a critical period." "The Michigan Municipal League is strongly supportive of a fully transparent government, but also one capable of doing its job of protecting the health, safety, and welfare, excuse me, welfare of people." And I quote, "So we are by, this governor authorization, we are now authorized to cancel this meeting, and I would also like to make a motion to, that we do not allow any children at any more of our city council meetings until we get clearance from government and health, upper government and health executives." The information that I was provided relative to kids is that all they, although they may not get sick or show signs of being sick, they can absolutely come in contact with the coronavirus and carry it back home to their family unknowingly. So it, they're, the, the way that they receive that type of virus is totally different from, say, a senior citizen who may show signs immediately. So for the health and benefit of the children, I would make a motion that we don't allow any more children to come in and do the pledge of allegiance until we are assured that it is safe.
Thank you, Councilwoman Green. Is there support for the motion? Is there support? Motion dies due to lack of support. Back to the original motion on canceling the April sixth meeting, I believe it is. Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Godbell.
No.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. The April sixth City Council meeting has been canceled.
Administrative note, the item that just postponed to the next council meeting is now postponed to the subsequent.
It said scheduled.
It did say scheduled.
Scheduled meeting.
Making sure. All right. Thank you. We now open up to comments or input from the public.
There might all wait.
Open up comments and our input from the public. Residents are reminded, they can come up for three minutes. You have three minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak may do so. Is there anyone on my right?
Go ahead, Ray. While I can't believe it myself, my name is Ray, Gold Ray here, is going to keep going, I believe it. We live, and we got to live, we can't let this virus take us down. We all need to work together, and I really appreciate you, fire guy, fire chief, sorry. To make about, to explain about this, I wrote, I put the numbers in my phone, as me as a peer mentor, you know, helping other people, I'm doing it even on Facebook, and it's very important to get the notices out. Like today, our disability concern board was canceled. A lot of places have been canceling, like big events, work, other employments. So it's hitting everybody, one way or the other. I cannot believe that, and you know, when we go to stores sometimes, we have to be patient, and be respectful to people, because we all are in this together. I mean, that's how we're going to clear this, you know, I mean, toilet papers, it's like, flew out the shelf, it's gone. I couldn't believe milk. All these Myers didn't have no milk at all. You know what, even my ambassadors program that I was going to do here, I'm going to hold it off until May, mental health month. But this month, I'm going to look at good health month. And I even appreciate the police, it's good to tell them thank you too, because you know what, they're out there putting their lives out there, even into this virus. We're all affected. And I wanted to say thanks to the fire department too, because you know what, we need to thank the mayor, we need to thank people for what they're doing, even council. We all need to work together, and this is what's going to bring people together. This is my passion, and I care what goes on. And I care about people, it's not just people with disabilities, we're all in it together as partnerships, as, so I just wanted to talk about that tonight, about that virus, and I know the DWIHN, our ambassadors is going to be out there, but like I said, we can't do any training, because I did call you, fire chief, but I just wanted to let you know, I'm putting it on hold, so, thank you.
Is there anyone on my left?
Lori Wilson, Westland. I got two questions. What are the chances of the study sessions being televised on WLND, like the Planning Commission and the council meetings? Because I was at the last one, and I heard what was said. Secondly, oh gosh, I just had a brain fart after that. Old age. Oh, yeah. There, there is a lot of things that are involved in this coronavirus, and I'm one of those people that has that underlying condition of diabetes, and there's a lot of people out there like that, so, you know, this is it. No more of the hugs, fellas.
Is there anyone else on my right?
Good evening, everybody. Dan Statchild, taxpaying citizen of the city of Westland. Lori stole a little bit of my thunder. I was at the last study session also, and for transparency, transparency purposes, I also was wondering whether we can have those meetings taped and put on the WLND so that people could see what actually goes on behind the scenes. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Close citizens' comments, move on to comments from the Administration. Mayor?
Mayor. Good evening. I just got a few things here. First of all, thank you for those council members that supported the renewal with WCA D perform assessing duties in the city of Westland. I appreciate your, your diligence on that and your, and your support. Next thing is, I'd like to recognize all the folks that worked on the recent election here in the city of Westland, and the clerk, and this entire department, and all the election workers, and everybody that, that worked in that. We had a, from the outside looking in, a very smooth election, so I'm sure there was difficulties internally, but at the end of the day, nice job on that. I want to thank all the residents of Westland that supported the sanitation mileage. I know that it's always difficult to, to put mileage language on the ballot, but Westland voters overwhelmingly supported that. I know a big part of that, and probably the reason a lot of people voted yes, because they want to bring recycling back to the city of Westland. So the Administration now will begin the process of putting a proposal together for City Council. Obviously, our work on that, which typically would have been the first thing we did this week, but we've been a little preoccupied with the coronavirus stuff, so we will get started on this. I believe, I think that the best way for the city to, to, to move forward on this- Through that whole process on recycling, we heard a lot of different companies out there that are doing recycling, and there's, there's an Oakland County recycling facility, there's an Ann Arbor recycling facility, there's a Washington County MRF that's looking at coming online. And I think what we'll do is we'll put out a request for proposals for all of those folks, and we'll, we'll see what, who responds, and what the numbers look like. And that's something that I'll work with Devon to get started here in the very near future city council. There's a lot of people gonna be home this week. April 30th is the first day of compost, believe it or not, we had a lot of phone calls on that, because people have been taking advantage of being at home with the mild, with the mild weather. City council, I'm not surprised you guys had a discussion tonight on canceling your meeting. There's a lot of communities that have city council and village township meetings tonight and tomorrow night, and like being a board member on the MML, this has been the number one question that's been coming in, and there's a lot of, these are extraordinary times, we're gonna see a lot of things that we typically don't see. I know that in Sterling Heights tonight, the mayor told me earlier today that they will be teleconferencing their, their council meeting tonight, so certainly that'll give the chance for the governor to kind of take a look at the policies and procedures that went into that, and, and take a look. So, I think there's gonna be a lot of more discussion on that in the future. And then, I'm gonna end on the coronavirus. I would like to, for those of you that haven't heard yet, I have appointed our fire chief, Mike Stratner, to serve as the city's emergency preparation director on this, and he's been extremely busy, he's been on conference calls with the White House, and with the governor's office, and the county executive's office, and CDC, and his regional chiefs, and he's done a pretty, actually done a really good job. You heard him here tonight. He had a speech, but he didn't need it, because he updated our staff on this recently, and he's been living, breathing, and, and dying this stuff. So, Chief, you're doing a great job, keep up the good work. I'd also like to recognize Craig Brown, he's here, our IT director. Craig doesn't get a lot of, a lot of props in the public eye, but he's done a great job of, of our website, cityofwestland.com, has really turned into our clearinghouse of all COVID-19 information, and he's done a lot of the work himself to keep our costs down, because we're at the end of a budget year. But he, now on the website, right on the homepage, he's, he's created a landing spot for all the latest information on COVID-19 question, you know, Q and As, basically everything that comes from the fire chief that he thinks is something we need to get out. He's also created another landing spot that, and he updates it as information comes in, and this one's pretty fluid, but it's a compilation of all these city buildings that have been closed, and events that have been canceled and postponed, and even over the weekend, he was trying to keep that as updated as possible. There's a couple things that you'll see in the morning that aren't on there tonight. We got some information from the 18th District Court. They're gonna be open on a very limited basis, so if you have any business with 18th District Court, you're definitely gonna wanna call them before you go, or take a look at the city's website tomorrow, we'll talk about that. We received a statement from Wayne County Treasurer Eric Sabree later this afternoon too, that if there's any residents in Wayne County, if there's any in Westland that are, that were identified on the 2020 foreclosure list, he is withholding all of those properties. He is saying that, that your taxes are still due. If, if you've entered into a, a payment plan with the county, you still have to make, you still have to make a payment. If you can't make the payment that you entered into, you gotta at least make something so that he can continue to stretch that out. There'll be interest, but that'll be something he'll work with you on, and for those folks that don't know, you can actually make those payments right here at the kiosk in Westland City Hall lobby. So, if you are suffering foreclosure and you need more information, you can certainly call my office, and, and I'll let you know on that. Then the last thing is, this afternoon about four o'clock, myself, the fire chief, and the council president Jim Hart, we filmed a PSA that is gonna start showing on WLND that kind of talks with the most updated information we had on the virus. The council president did a nice job updating everybody on all these executive orders coming out from the governor, and what we're hearing from the national level, and I, I tried to speak, and this is something you're gonna really see us push over the next couple days, is all the different ways that residents can interact with their city government. I know a lot of people are gonna wanna stay in their homes and try not to go out to buildings while City Hall is still open. Also on the website, Craig, has something that should come online, hopefully later tonight or tomorrow, that would just have a list of all the different things that you can do at the city of Westland, and just about every department, you can interact with us without actually coming here. So, whether it's making payments online, or ordering permits, or following up on the assessing department, a lot of that can be done from the comfort of your home. So, take a look at that, and we'll continue to update those services to make it as easy as possible, and we'll try to, I mean, this has been a pretty fluid thing, a lot of things happen, and just about every time I come back in my office and look at the TV, something else has happened, so I'm sure something else has happened since we've been here tonight. So, once again, thank you all for coming out tonight, thank you city council for your time.
Anything from the attorney's office today?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. Councilman Hershberg?
No comments this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Green?
Thank you. I'd like to announce to the public that my coffee hour schedule for this coming Saturday has been postponed due to, of course, the coronavirus, and the library has canceled all of their public meetings as well, I believe, for the next 30 days or so, for public health and safety reasons. So, I'll let the community know when it is back on the calendar. Also, if anybody needs assistance, this, in terms of a resident in the city of Westland, if I can help you, or if I can answer any questions, please feel free to give me a call, I can be reached at 734-828-7010. Also, just wanted to say that the, the governor, and actually pretty much the entire country is recommending that we practice social distancing. This is something that many of us has, have never experienced in our lifetime, so I would just urge the, the community to, although it may be an inconvenience for some, especially with some of the closures that are happening, but this is definitely for our benefit, please take it seriously, and if there's anything that we can do to assist you here at the city, please let us know. Finally, the census applications, you all should have already received your application to complete the 2020 census. The, again, the, you have the option, they've made it very convenient this time around, you can complete it online, over the telephone, or return it via mail, and you can find the online address and the telephone number on the census application that you've received. And if you do one of those options, or if you take one of those options, that will prevent a census worker from knocking on your door, I believe in the next couple months, unless, you know, something else happens in terms of public safety, you will begin to get knocks on the doors if it's not completed. So, please utilize one of those avenues. Thank you very much.
Councilman Gabbau.
Thanks. I had a couple questions. Unfortunately, Steve has left already, but one of which was gonna be the impact on the vouchers, and not having a council meeting in two weeks, and the payment of bills that the city needs to make, as well as through the chair to the city attorney. The next scheduled meeting for the council at this point in time is April 20th, which, if we are to uphold the charter, would mean that at that meeting, council would have to vote to have the next meeting the following week, on April 27th, in order to have the two meetings in the month of April. Again, I don't know what the impact is financially, and, and being able to conduct the business at this point in time. I know council could schedule special meetings, but our charter called, and those are in addition to regular meetings of the council, so, A, can we, if, if it is determined that we need to have a special meeting to vote on just the vouchers, if that's allowable, or is, is that a business item that can only take place at a scheduled meeting? And then, B, the appropriateness of having it on the next agenda to have the second meeting on the 27th.
Through the chair. The charter does provide for two council meetings a month. It's also true that the council only conducts its business through its meetings and its votes at meetings, so approval of certain items by the council can only be done at scheduled meetings. So, I think this is a time of somewhat uncertainty as to how to proceed, and it's also changing sort of rapidly. There is a movement afoot to try to get the city some relief. If you reviewed, as I know many of you have, the executive orders of the governor, they apply to states and state bodies, they don't apply to municipalities. Even the press release that was quoted by the councilwoman is a request by the Michigan Municipal League to receive some relief from the governor. It is not relief from the governor, as I understand it at this point. So, I think those, in terms of how the council can conduct its business in April, will yet to be seen, and if all that business can be done in the one meeting that gets scheduled at the present time.
You know, there was a, there's been a lot out in the media about the coronavirus, and we're all getting bombarded. I would recommend that everyone follow the chief's advice and go to the authorized websites for the CDC and the World Health Organization to get their information, so that the, the Facebook quote unquote reality may or may not be true. So, the, please, you know, everyone, take care of yourself, take care of your neighbors. There are lots of people that don't have the ability to get out and, and do minimal chores or have problems, so look out for your neighbors, and, you know, be kind. That's all I have. Thanks.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Good evening. I again echo Councilman Gabbau's recommendations. I implore you to heed the caution and advisement of our government. I know sometimes some of us feel like it's far reaching, or we feel that it's inconvenient, and I don't disagree with you. However, we all have to work together, because that's the only way we can, what is the term, Chief?
Flatten the curve.
Flatten the curve. So, you know, let's put aside the inconvenience, let's enjoy the things that we do have at home, let's be grateful that we have a home to stay in, let's be grateful for the food that we do have, and the toilet paper, if you're so lucky as well. You know, find some projects around the house, you know, put those little chores that you've been putting off, the movie or the book that you've been putting off, and the time will go by quickly. But we all have to do, to work together. The chief has given us a lot of websites and phone numbers, please use them, please be cautious, and, you know, use an extraordinary amount of thought when you're using our emergency systems. You know, please don't put off, if you do really feel that you have an illness, please, please, please go to the appropriate healthcare facilities or our emergency workers, but please don't ignore those symptoms and put them in harm's way either. Our police and firemen are out in the public, they are still working, they don't have the option to work from home. You can't call in fire suppression, and you can't call in policing, so let's please be respectful and mindful of them, they have families that they go home to. I wish you all health, and we will see you soon.
Councilman McDermott.
So, first off, I would like to say thank you to the administration, even though I didn't vote yes, but I would like to thank them for the comprehensive numbers that they provided me in regards to the municipal assessing, and what the cost would be, reflexive of in-house versus, you know, contracting in out. So, I do appreciate the hard work from the administration, and from Steve that went into putting in those comprehensive numbers for me, so thank you on that. I think, you know, in a perfect world, and we would have a dividing line between those people who are associates with city contractors and money that gets donated to campaigns. Certainly, by no means would I ever want to impugn the integrity of anybody up here, and I don't think that's an issue at all here. I just think, in a perfect world, with campaign finance laws, if we could wave wine and make things different, there would be that dividing line, but there isn't, and so, nothing we can do. In terms of the coronavirus, I do want to echo Councilman Gabbau's sentiments, to be careful of the sources that you get your information from. On social media, there's a lot of misinformation and purposeful disinformation, and so, going through the recommended channels of information, whether it's here in the city, through the cityofwestland.com, or a fire chief, or going through the CDC, or the World Health Organization, please be diligent in where you get your information from, because on social media, just because you saw it in a meme, or a post, or a tweet, does not mean it is true. So, you want to verify the information and understand the sources that you're getting that information from. I'd like to thank the administration's leadership, not only with the mayor's office, but also the fire chief, and also our police, for really taking this issue of the coronavirus pandemic head-on, and getting the information out in a, in a timely and informative fashion. I know there are some other municipalities who still haven't, you know, kind of alerted their communities on who their point of contact is, and where they can best get the information, but I think here in the city, the administration, the chief, we were on top of it from, you know, basically day one when this story really, you know, broke this week, where we really realized the gravity of the situation. So, I'd like to thank their leadership, from the mayor's office, and also the chief as well. And I'd like to thank our municipal employees, not only our police and fire, who have to continue working through this every day, as my colleague said, they have families to go home to, but they can't call in sick, and they cannot do this from home and just, you know, plug in a laptop. So, thank you not only to our police officers, our firefighters, who are out there in the midst of this pandemic, working so hard and so diligently, but also our DPW employees and our trash pickup, that, that service doesn't stop in the middle of a coronavirus pandemic. So, thank you to each and every one of them who are out there sacrificing and putting themselves, you know, at risk, diving head-on into the coronavirus situation and continuing to work as well. And I'd like to thank all of our hospital staff, our nurses, our doctors, our administrators, anybody that works at a hospital, or anybody that works in retail who, you know, can't go home during this and keeps the shelves stocked, or keeps the hospitals running, to make sure that we are all taken care of during the coronavirus pandemic. And the final thing, and not to politic too much from here, but I would love it if everybody could call members of Congress and demand that we have paid sick leave for everybody that's going to be out of work during this coronavirus problem. It's not a Republican or Democratic issue, it's not a liberal or conservative issue, it is an issue of making sure that people who are out of work, people who can't go to work, people who are tipped workers, who are not gonna be getting the full pay that they would otherwise normally get, are taken care of during this. And there are a lot of people who paid sick leave could go a long way for. So, calling your member of Congress, calling our two senators, Senators Peters and Stabenow, to demand that we have paid sick leave, I think would go a long way for a lot of people. It's currently passed the United States House of Representatives, but just so you know, it is sitting stalled on the desk of the Senate Majority Leader in the United States Senate, so paid sick leave could go a long way for a lot of people, and I hope that you call members of Congress and senators to demand that they take action on paid sick leave. With that, I just, you know, same as my colleagues, urge caution with everybody, follow the proper precautions from the CDC and the World Health Organization, and I think together, we will all get through this. Thank you.
Councilman, Council President Pro Tim Londo.
Thanks, President Hart. I also want to start off by thanking the city clerk's office and your staff, all the election workers, for what the mayor mentioned, a smooth election, it did seem smooth from us on the outside, so we appreciate all your guys' work on that. I also want to mention, the clerk's office let us know last Monday that former councilman Bill Johnson's grandson Chance was found deceased last Monday. Unfortunately, the funeral's already taken place, so I really just want to just share my condolences to the family. I also want to thank the mayor and his administration for their emergency preparation plan, and for keeping council updated daily, if not every other day or so. And a big thank you to Fire Chief Stratner for your leadership during this tough time. You know, it was kind of mentioned a lot from my colleagues, but you know, it's about being a responsible global citizen right now. You know, how I act affects you, how you act affects me, so it's really important that, again, we to Fire Chief Stratner for your leadership during this tough time. You know, it was kind of mentioned a lot from my colleagues, but you know, it's about being a responsible global citizen right now. You know, how I act affects you, how you act affects me. So it's really important that, again, we wash our hands correctly, use a hand sanitizer. Stay in if you can stay in. If you're sick, don't leave the home. We don't want to overwhelm the healthcare system. You know, as we were stating, doing what we can do to provide social distance so we can stop this spread of this virus. We all have an obligation to take care of each other and, you know, it makes a difference not just to you, but to me and the people all around the world. So, and while everyone's stocking up on essential items, please be sure to stock up on compassion. As a few people mentioned, maybe knock on your neighbor's door, speak to family members who maybe can't get out and make sure they're okay, make sure they don't eat anything, leave a note on their door if you know that they don't want to answer their door. And as always, if you have any questions, the mayor mentioned and they mentioned on the cityofwestland.com, or you can call the mayor's office at 734-467-3200. His staff's been fantastic at answering questions daily. I also put my personal phone number out there as well, as I always have. My number is 734-223-0200. Please reach out to us, you know, even if you don't think it's super urgent, you just want to speak about it, you have questions or need to know, you know, where to be pointing in the right direction for resources. And other than that, everyone be safe. Crazy times, you know, with the restaurant industry being closed down, the bar industry and everything, casinos, hotels, it's really affecting our local economy. So there is a list online right now currently on Facebook. I know the Chamber of Commerce put a list up of hours and phone numbers for local businesses to do carryout options or delivery. So please continue to support our local businesses because they're going to need us more now than ever. So that's it tonight. Thank you.
All right. So first of all, thank you to Dinah Smith for coming out and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. Second thing, mayor, I have March 30th being when compost collection gets picked up, not April 30th. So I don't want to contradict you, but I think you got twipped up. So it's March 30th, your compost picks up because I bagged a lot of my compost last week knowing it's coming soon. So March 30th, the compost comes by. With that, I'll just wrap it up by saying I'm proud of all of my colleagues and all the fantastic things they've said in support. They hit everything on top. They hit every nail on the head, right? So compassion, stock up on it. Take care of all of your neighbors. Take care of yourselves. Take care of your families. And don't get your news from Facebook, okay? With that is our motion to adjourn.